Good evening. This is Tuesday, January eighteenth, 2022. It's a regular city council meeting at 6:00 PM and it is now six o'clock. The city council, I'm calling this meeting to order. And our first item on our agenda this evening will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join us, our council? Thank you. We'll do a roll call, the seating for the council. One of our members will be online.
Doug Laszlo.
Present.
Jay Frank.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Anthony Russo.
Present.
Jay David Reed, I'm not sure he's with us just yet.
All right.
And Erica Taylor.
Present.
So we have all four councilors and our youth council representative is here. We're missing Jay David Reed.
All right, thank you. And David may try to get on later on. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? There are not. I do have a proclamation this evening. And it's a School Choice Week proclamation and I will read that. I don't believe we have anyone from School Choice with us, so I will go ahead and read this. Whereas all children in the city of Montrose should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the city of Montrose recognizes the important role that effective education plays in preparing all students in our community to be successful adults. Whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the city of Montrose, and whereas the city of Montrose is home to a multiple multitude of high-quality public nonprofit schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home. And whereas the education variety not only helps to diversify our community, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas the city of Montrose has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective education options. Therefore, we, the city council of the city of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby recognize January twenty-third through January twenty-ninth of 2022 as School Choice Week in the city of Montrose and call this observance to be to the attention of our citizens and witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the facial seal of the city of Montrose on this eighteenth day of January. Item number six on our agenda this evening is a call to the public for public comments. Is there anyone here that would care to make a public comment? And do we have anyone online? All right, thank you. Item seven on the agenda this evening is a consent agenda. This will cover three items. A council meeting minutes from January twenty-fourth. The city council consideration of a rescheduling of April fifth, a regular city council meeting, and a city council consideration of the city-owned equipment for disposal at auction. I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the note that that's the January fourth minutes, not twenty-fourth.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Everyone vote, please. And that passes unanimously with one abstention. Item eight, new hotel and restaurant license application. A license application for six forty-seven East Main Street for Rotman's LLC doing business as Rotman Cattlemen's Table for a consumption on license, on premise license. City Attorney Chris Dowsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the city council is an application for a new hotel, restaurant, liquor license for Rotman's Cattlemen's Table located at six forty-seven East Main Street for the consumption on the premises. For this application, neighborhood has been defined as the city of Montrose. This is a public hearing for a new hotel and restaurant license, and it is incumbent on the applicant to show the current needs of the neighborhood defined as the city are not currently being met by the existing facilities and the adult inhabitants of the city wish to have this new establishment. The permit is in order and the fees have been paid. From the city staff's review of the application, we have seen nothing that would prevent the council from issuing a license, notwithstanding this hearing. This council can make a decision at the end of the hearing or defer a decision up to thirty days. At this time, I will ask the applicant to step forward and introduce themselves to the council and announce their home address for the record.
Good evening. If you would, please state your name and your address.
Yes, sir. My name is Jerry Rotman, one of the applicants. Address is one four four nine one oh seventy-four Road, Montrose, Colorado.
Good evening. My name's Tony Oxley and my address is one three seven four four six nine five oh Road, Montrose.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you and the councilors wish to examine the petitioner at this point? Or do you wish that I ask some of the preliminary questions that we frequently ask?
If you would, please go ahead.
Absolutely. So can you tell us about Rotman's Cattlemen's Table?
Absolutely. So the concept is a farm-to-table restaurant serving proteins and produce locally sourced. I have a local cattle ranch here in town, well, within the county and in the state, where we're going to be providing a portion of that beef products. Additionally, we're sourcing other farmers and ranchers in the area for locally sourced lamb and pork, and hopefully we'll be able to find some very well-established people in hopefully in the Hotchkiss area and other, and Olathe and Delta that can help us with produce. So our goal is and our idea is to present the community with a, you know, a farm-to-table, just simple menus, nothing real elaborate, you know, protein, a starch, a vegetable, in an affordable fashion. That's complemented by, you know, the reason we're asking for the liquor license is to complement the food menu. The intention is not to be a bar, the intention is to be a restaurant, you know, and alcohol services, I think, are required, you know, accessory or necessity to that type of operation.
Absolutely. Perfect. Well, thank you. Do you intend on drawing customers from the city of Montrose?
I'm sorry, sir?
Do you intend on drawing customers from the city of Montrose?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, yes.
Well, that's why we've determined the neighborhood for these hearings to be the city. Do you object to this determination at all?
I apologize. I have tinnitus in my ear so bad that it's ringing.
Oh, no, I don't know if I'm speaking into the mic well enough. I apologize. So we've determined that the neighborhood for these hearings is going to be the city. Do you have any objection to that?
No, sir, no.
No? Okay, perfect. Do you think that there's a desire on behalf of the population here in Montrose to have your establishment?
Absolutely. I'm friends with most, well, most of the other restaurant owners in town and, you know, no names to be named, but they're all very supportive of what we're trying to do. And, you know, one gentleman who actually also sells steaks in this town said, people aren't going to come to my restaurant every single day, so we need an option, we need a choice. And that's what we're trying to do is give another option, you know, to the community, you know, as well as folks that may be passing through the community. I mean, as we all know, during the summer months, we get a huge influx of folks that come to visit our community. And I think another, you know, another dining establishment is well, would be well-served.
Absolutely. And as you know, petitions were circulated in support of this establishment. Summary of the petitions is as follows. There were fifty-nine signatures submitted. Eleven signatures were determined to be insufficient for various reasons. Forty-eight of the signatures were determined to be valid and in support of the license. A few of the comments that were received in support of your license is, "I can't wait. I'm excited. We need a good steakhouse. Absolutely support and need met. We really need more options in Montrose. I think this would be a great addition." And we need more steak choices. Now additionally, the city of Montrose is very serious about enforcing liquor laws as a state of Colorado. Would you please describe your familiarity with these laws?
Yes, well, we intend to, we being, my partner and I and any staff members would like to, we're going to actually attend the tips program that the Montrose City Police puts on. In addition to that, I've already started studying the hundred-and-fourteen-page Colorado statute on liquor laws and of all that nature. And we want to be well-versed and also maintain our staff and our managers at that education level, too. I mean, I'm, you know, a strong believer in the law's the law and we don't want to, you know, we want to be around here for a long time and don't want to, you know, don't want to add to any other type of malice of the law that would, you know, create a situation that, you know, would put us, shine a bad light on our establishment, you know. You know, on top of this restaurant's namesake is mine and also my ranch's name, and that's a legacy that I'm trying to create and I'm trying to, you know, protect that as, you know, and establish that as, you know, as someplace where people want to go and respect also.
Absolutely.
Sir, I have a request for you. If you wouldn't mind, could you speak into the microphone a little bit more?
Oh, I apologize, sir.
You're facing Chris and our online listeners aren't going to be able to hear your answers.
Are you familiar with the underage drinking task force here in the Montrose area?
Under drink, I'm sorry, the underage drinking?
Underage drinking task force?
Passport?
Task force?
Task force?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Not currently fully versed on the task force, but we would certainly, we'd love to be educated on that, so.
Absolutely. So you are available of the tips course that is offered through the police?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Perfect. And you understand that it's the city's intention that all licensees in the city of Montrose and their servers attend these trainings?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Would you be willing to commit to the council that if your license is granted, that you as licensee managers and all servers attend such training within thirty days of issuance of the license if it's not, if they're not already certified?
Yes, sir, absolutely, yes.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, council, do we have any other questions?
Barbara, do you have any questions?
Yes, this location, is this the location that once upon a time was a church? If I got the right location? Is the location, did it used to be a church?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I understood the correct location.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
Do you plan to be open five or six days a week? Into the mic, please, so we can, everyone can hear the answer.
We haven't determined that yet, you know, it's early days yet. We've got to sort it out whether we're closed on Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, but you plan to be open a majority of days?
Yeah, I mean, if the demand's there, obviously, yeah, absolutely, totally, two-hundred percent, yeah.
Great, fantastic.
Anthony?
Just in the sense of, I'd love to hear when you're planning on actually opening.
We try, we're trying. We think in March, March the first, that's what we wanted to do, but it's how things go. I mean, it's red tape at the moment, isn't it?
No, no, perfect. I was just curious.
No, we'd love to. We'd really like to open up on the second of the second of the second of the twenty-two. You know, we'd like those four little ducks, you know, the second of February twenty-two, that would be amazing, but I.
There's always the twenty-second.
Twenty-second, yeah.
Which is a Tuesday, by the way, which we truly have, truly be Tuesday.
That would be good, wouldn't it? But first of March.
Thank you.
David? I would just point out the information he was talking about, a drug task force, they do bring underage people in who will try to get a drink in your establishment. So you certainly need to be aware of that, and I suspect they will cover that in the servers class also.
Yes, sir.
If the council has more questions, I'll open up a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak on this application? Would you care to come up and make a comment? You guys can stay there for a second. Please state your name and address.
My name, my name's Carmen Hernandez. My address is one six three Montrose Drive, Montrose, Colorado, A1401. I'm really excited, especially since it seems like they're going to offer more local jobs, which is what we need right now especially. And then it looks like they're willing, I know Delta is still kind of local to us, and I really want a good steaks, too, so I'm excited for that. Yeah, it is, the steak part got me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back there and close the hearing. Council, do you have any other questions? In that case, I would consider a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the new hotel and restaurant liquor license at six forty-seven East Main Street for Rotman's LLC doing business as Rotman's Cattlemen's Table for on-premise consumption.
Second.
I have a motion, second, please vote. And that passes unanimously with one abstention. Item nine, new hotel and restaurant liquor license application. Staff Assistant Attorney Chris Dowsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This might be a little bit repetitive as this is going to be another new hotel and restaurant liquor license, but before the city council is an application for this new hotel and restaurant liquor license for Mimos or Memos, I apologize, Memos, perfect, located at two sixteen North Townsend for consumption on premises. For this application, neighborhood has been, again, defined as the city of Montrose. This is a public hearing for a new hotel, restaurant license, and it is incumbent on the applicant to show the current needs of the neighborhood as defined as the city. They are not currently being met by the existing facilities and the adult inhabitants of the city wish to have this new establishment. The permit is in order and the fees have been paid, again, from the city staff's review of this application. We have seen nothing that would prevent the council from issuing a license, notwithstanding this hearing. This council can make a decision at the end of this hearing or defer the decision for up to thirty days. At this time, I will ask the applicant to step forward and introduce themselves to the council and announce their home address for the record.
Mi nombre es Rocío Rueda, Ortega, y pues represento Memos.
My name is Rocío Rueda Ortega and I represent Memos.
And your address, please.
Es seis tres nueve cinco cinco Nancy Way, Montrose, Colorado, ochenta uno cuatrocientos tres.
My address is six three nine five five Nancy Way, Montrose, Colorado.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, again, do you and the councilors wish to examine the petitioner at this point? Or do you wish that I ask the general questions?
Please go ahead.
Thank you. So tell me about Memos.
M? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Vendemos desayuno, lonche, y sodas, antojitos.
So we are a business dedicated to sell cooked food, breakfast, lunches, and drinks, pretty much everything.
Thank you. And you're going to have your customers from the city of Montrose?
Sí.
Yes.
And that's why we have determined the neighborhood for these hearings to be the city. Do you object to this at all?
No, I don't have any, I agree with you.
And do you believe that the people of Montrose would like this establishment? Or the restaurant? Oh, yeah, absolutely. Do you think the people of Montrose would like this restaurant?
I think so because most, the vast majority of my customers are from Montrose and they are increasing more and more.
Perfect. And again, petitions were circulated in support of Memos. The summary of the petitions is as follows. Hundred-and-twenty-six signatures were submitted. Forty-eight signatures were determined to be insufficient for several reasons. Seventy-eight signatures were determined to be valid and in support of license. Thirty-two additional signatures were collected online paper on non-petition forms, and these signatures could not be verified. And they were not included in that count above. But the comments received in support of the license being issued were as follows. Great people, wonderful food. Would be a great addition. Best place in Montrose, great service. Wonderful people. Great place. Great food. Best place in Montrose to eat.
Thanks to everybody.
Again, the city of Montrose is serious about enforcing the liquor laws of Colorado? Are you familiar with the liquor laws of Colorado?
I can't say that I'm a hundred percent well-versed into liquor laws, but I'm willing to take classes and I'm learning more and more every day.
Are you familiar that Montrose has an underage drinking task force?
Yes, I am aware of it.
Okay, so you know that this task force will send in underage? Yeah, and try to buy alcohol from your establishment?
Yeah, I agree. I will follow the rules.
Okay. Did you know that Montrose Police offers a class with, for liquor licenses or for the liquor laws?
Yes, I do.
Do you understand that it's the city's intention that all licensees in the city of Montrose and their servers attend these trainings?
Yes, I do.
Would you be willing to commit to the council that if your license is granted, that you as licensee, managers, and all servers attend this training within thirty days of issuance of the license if they're not already certified?
Yes, I agree, I do.
Well, thank you. Mr. Mayor, council, do you have any further questions?
All right, Barbara, do you have any questions?
I have a statement that I'm going to try and use my elementary Spanish. Es importante que los estudiantes no beben cerveza en el restaurante bueno. Gracias.
Anthony?
We can translate that for the record. I think it's pretty obvious that it's important that the students cannot drink beer in the restaurant. It is right across the street from the high school.
No, this is a new location.
Oh, this is a new location. Oh, lo siento.
That's actually very important.
Regardless.
Yeah, to clarify. Is, so where is the new location exactly, just so we can confirm?
I don't know it yet by memory, but.
I believe it's right across.
It's the same place where the Dragon Wall used to be, the Chinese restaurant.
It's two sixteen North Townsend.
A new location.
They're moving from South Ninth.
Okay. I missed, I just saw the address Townsend, you know.
So I'm planning on leaving the old place open to, just to keep selling the kids all the things that they need.
Anthony, do you have anything?
No, I think that's all.
David? I think that's great and I'm glad to see that you'll be able to keep both places open. But I think it does do a nice service to the high school there.
Doug, I do have a question.
All right.
Will you be opening up for dinner in the evenings now that you're moving to the new location and would be getting the liquor license?
Yes.
Barbara, did you have something else? All right, in that case, I would open a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak to this? Please come forward, state your name. If you would, both, please state your name and addresses.
Brianna Bruseno, six two one Tepita Road, number three.
Carmen Hernandez, one six three Montrose Drive, Montrose, Colorado, A1401.
So we're both daughters of Rocío. We've been in the restaurant industry since I started working. Also, my sister, that's all we've really done. We've worked in a lot of local restaurants, and so not only did we help her in the front of the house, opening Memos in the location that they are now, we're also going to be helping them in the new location. So we know a little bit more about restaurants and the industry and everything. So I think it'll be a pretty good team that we have as a family. My stepdad, a cook, and her being the owner, and us having that experience that we do.
And then we're going to help her with all the translations of the alcohol laws and everything she needs to know, you know, to be in the right. especially with the minors and everything that's going on. So we're gonna be with her to help her and guide her through the right things that she needs to know. And especially with all the training and make sure she has all the proper training. Because like, I took a class, like, a long time ago, you know? So of course, every time it's updated. And so we're gonna take the classes like we should, and then she's gonna go with us, and we're gonna make sure she understands everything as well.
Including everybody that can serve, or anybody of our servers or anybody working in our restaurant that can serve beer or alcohol or anything, that they should take the classes just in case we need somebody covered or they are needing to be in the bar.
All right, I'm very excited to hear that you're gonna be helping with that. That's a very valuable resource. Thank you.
A lot of our customers are local. I think a lot of you guys, I see a lot of familiar faces already. But we also have been getting a lot of traffic from Ridgeway, Tahriride, Cedar Ridge, everywhere. So it's kinda good to hear that it's not just local, but we're bringing in a lot of jobs, a lot of people, a lot of money through the city.
For the city.
For the city.
And we're gonna help her get everything she needs and all the classes she needs.
So we'll know who to pick on if something goes wrong, right? We'll know who to pick on if something goes wrong. Thank you very much. I do have one more question for you. Could you give us an idea of when you think you'll be opening?
I'm thinking that if everything goes well and everything goes as planned, we're thinking about opening about the second week of February.
Thank you, very good. All right, I will close the hearing. I'll bring it back here, and I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would approve a new hotel and restaurant liquor license at two sixteen North Townsend Avenue for Mimos LLC, doing business as Mimos for on-premise consumption.
I'll second that.
I have a motion second, please vote. And that passes unanimously with one abstention. Thank you. Thanks to both of you.
You just stick around.
Yeah, if you'd like to leave, I...
You're welcome to.
Just go ahead quietly, sneak out.
And good luck to everyone.
The next item on our agenda is item ten, the Southeast Water Transmission Main Construction Contract. And that will be presented by City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, no changes since we talked about this at the work session. You guys can hear me okay?
If you could turn it up just a little.
Let me get closer, maybe that'll help. And not blow this up, okay? So, this is the same as what we discussed at the recent work session. So, no major changes. Just for the benefit of anybody who's joining, I'll run through it really quickly. This is for a twenty-four inch water main that we'll be running. You can see the screen sharing there. Starts at the intersection of sixty-eight hundred Road and Sunnyside, runs down Sunnyside Road, south through what'll be the Hill Street Extension, which we'll be talking about next, down Niagara Road, or down the remainder of Hill Street to Niagara, west down Niagara there, and eventually down through Fox Park and to the intersection of sixty-seven hundred Road and East Oak Grove, where we have an existing pump station there. This is a master plan project that's been in the master plan for at least ten years. They are all kinda laid out at various growth levels in the city to stay ahead of growth and make sure that we're able to deliver water and keep our tanks full during any kind of emergency demand and even peak demands in the summer as we see more and more drought. So this project fulfills that plan. Eventually, there may be continued extensions down sixty-seven hundred Road as continued growth occurs. And depending on how the routing and interconnect happens with the new treatment plant to be installed down by Kelowna. But in turn, this solves the foreseeable need. And it's kind of a continuation, part three of a project we've been working on over the past four years to... If you remember, we've recently upsized to a twenty-four inch line coming off of the connection with Project Seven up by Miami Road at the Museum of the Mountain West. And then up and over what, you know, may be a future alignment of sixty-eight hundred Road between Sunnyside Road and Miami Road. So, kinda continue marching along here to stay ahead of growth. And the product was designed primarily in-house. We got four bidders. The lowest was Williams Construction, which we've had great experience working with on multiple projects, including some of the airport trunk sewer work, the Sunnyside Mesa Sewer, and the Hill Crest Extension a couple of years ago. So, well qualified to perform the work. We also have a contract in there to have Delmont help with the construction stakeout. We were able to do the design, but when contractors need stuff staked out, they usually need a lot of it, they need it pretty quickly. We don't have the resources to do that level of staking. And so, unless they're support, they're the ones that did a lot of the work on the Hill Street Extension. So, they're kind of a natural fit to help stake out all of that. As far as schedule, it's a pretty long project. So, they break ground here within the next month or so, probably, once the pipe shows up and would start up near sixty-eight hundred Road. And then just kinda march their way south. They're trying to get through Hill Street by June, or by, I think it's May, in order to turn that over so that that can be ready for the summer. And then, we're scheduling the work in Fox Park for the fall of 2022, fall and winter, so we don't impact all the users in the summer so that park remains available. And also, we don't wanna come into a pile of water every morning after the sprinklers have run all night. So, a couple of reasons driving us to do that work in the winter. And the product itself would wrap up in the kinda early first or second quarter of 2023. Once going down Hill Street Niagara, there will be localized traffic impacts. So we'll work with the contractors on traffic control plans to limit those as much as possible. And obviously, detours will be set up so that people will always have access to their homes. Product will be managed by our engineering department. We had three million dollars in 2022 out of the water fund. This is a hundred percent a water project, so it's funded by the user fees that we charge for water. So any balance that carries into 2023 would be budgeted at that time. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Scott. I think we've covered this quite a bit in work sessions, but we'll ask... Barbara, do you have any questions?
No questions. It's just really nice to see some major improvements being done to our infrastructure. You know, I don't think folks will really notice per se. I mean, they'll notice the construction, but it'll all be underground at the end of the day. But it does make our city more resilient, and that we're thinking about this stuff for the future.
Anthony?
I'm gonna assume, Scott, that we'll try to do a lot of this work when it's not irrigation season so that we don't have quite as much water, groundwater. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the product is pretty heavy on the front end, so first and second quarter of this year. They do plan a summer break once the... So a couple of reasons, you know, materials and sequencing and efficiency. But groundwater is a big one of those too. We try and not do a lot of deep utility projects late summer because the groundwater levels just make that kind of a diminishing return.
All right, thank you. I would accept any public comments. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve... I'm gonna look at it, make sure I get the right number. Three million, two hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents in expenditures for construction of the Southeast Water Transmission Main Construction Project as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item is item eleven, the Hill Street Extension Construction Contract. And that'll be Scott also.
So, same area. Let me screen share here to show where we're looking. Same, and yeah, no changes since we discussed at work session, but I'll again give a quick overview. So, the comp plan calls for the completion of Hill Street. Right now, Hill Street is constructed, essentially starting at East Oak Grove Road. Between East Oak Grove and Sunnyside, it collects, or it classifies as a collector. And then north of Niagara Road, it classifies as a minor arterial. Comp plan calls for that to continue with development as it marches north. The area circled here is a product we're looking at. So, this project would pick up where it left off with kinda the last development boom and take Hill Street as a minor arterial up to Sunnyside Road. As development continues to the north, the next likely progression would be to bring that up to Miami Road. Just as a placeholder, the comp plan does show it going up to Highway fifty. That's probably pretty unlikely. The most likely scenario for a couple of reasons is that this road will eventually end at Miami. But what we're looking at now is the extension of, from where it ends up to Sunnyside Road. The project was kind of accomplishing a couple of things, obviously, helping to build out our minor arterial network, helping to support workforce market rate housing. So, if anyone's noticed, there's a large construction going on for a hundred-plus lots to be put in along what's called the Woods Crossing subdivision. And then this is also the same alignment of that waterline product that we just talked about. So a couple of things overlap right here. The product was designed, so the person that's developing that subdivision also had to design Hill Street as part of their project in order to make sure all of the grades and entrances and everything would work in utility crossings. So, we were able to piggyback on top of that effort, add a couple of sheets with details, and bid that as a standalone project. We received five bids. The low bidder was Old Castle Southwest Group, which is kinda the parent company of Tahriride Gravel that's doing the work. They're considered qualified to perform the work. We have, the only work experience we have working with them recently, outside of supplying materials, they're a big aggregate and asphalt supplier, but they are currently working on the Burt Street Bridge project, and that's going really well. So, good recent experience working with them, and their references check out well. In this case, it's all, all of the construction is in kinda greenfield areas that don't have any traffic on them right now. So the road impacts or traffic impacts will be relatively minor. You will see some along the shoulders of Sunnyside Road as tie-ins occur. But for the most part, essentially no traffic or detour impacts associated with this portion of the project. The project will be managed by this, our engineering department. Because this one was designed by Delmont Consultants, we do also have aligned them to do the construction stakeout just to maintain consistency with the design. We budgeted one point two million overall, so that leaves us a hundred and forty-seven thousand under budget. And the project also does include a ten percent contingency. So, this product's pretty, about as straightforward as they come because there's not a lot of utility work. It's out in the middle of the field, so don't expect much use of that contingency in this case. Happy to answer any questions.
Anthony? David? Barbara? I have a, Scott, approximately how much distance is that? About a half mile or so?
Fourteen hundred linear feet, so about a quarter mile.
About a quarter of a mile, I think. As far as any utility services, have we got anything in the future that will cause us any difficulty with this?
No, so that's kinda the beauty of being able to line this up with the master plan and all their subdivision planning. Should be able to get, and we even upsized, like, you know, the local water main that goes through there. So, you know, with modern planning and communication, we're able to hopefully design these things to never have to go back into them again. I mean, everything requires maintenance at some point, but realistically, this road shouldn't need to be touched for fifty years. The utility portions, obviously, surface treatments and chip seals and stuff.
All right, thank you. I would accept any public comment. I see none. In that case, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve one million, fifty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents in expenditures for construction of the Hill Street Extension Project as presented.
Second.
I have a motion second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item is item twelve, Cerise Park Waterline Bore Construction Contract Change Order. Scott Murphy.
Again, no changes from the discussions at work session, but another quick overview. So, if anyone saw the activity going on out kinda between Cerise Park and River Bottom Park, we've been working to install a river connection, waterline connection across the river for multiple purposes, resiliency, redundancy of the system, reliability of the system. Should you have, we only have several river crossings, so should you ever lose one of those, having backups to those to maintain pressure and fire flow and water quality, very important. So, this project is kinda the last of a multi-year effort to create that waterline loop. The other benefit to this is it also has worked to serve the new amphitheater, previous phase of the project. So, good opportunity to kinda get multiple birds with one stone. We approved a two hundred and eleven thousand dollar contract with Ridgeway Valley Enterprises. Earlier in the summer, we, there's always gonna be a winter project, but we bid it in the summer, given all of the lead time and material issues, so that we could get the pipe coming. Everything generally went well, with the exception of just some pretty undesirable soil conditions. They bid this project pretty aggressively. It was a local general contractor and a local drilling sub. If you remember from the first bids, the second and third bidders were more than double, ranged from, in comparison to two hundred and eleven thousand, they went from four hundred and eighty-five to six hundred and fifty-six thousand, to give you a feel for where they were on that bid. They gave it their best shot, but did end up spending a lot of time in order to get the alignment just right and make sure we didn't have any issues with the river or long-term durability and reliability of the pipe. Ended up taking them quite a bit of time from some pretty undesirable soil conditions beyond what was anticipated in the bid. So that's the primary basis for the request for a change order. They were requesting, I think it was approximately forty-nine thousand, two hundred to cover the additional expenses, and they kinda list those here in more detail. We did have the contingency on the project in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred, so they were looking for a net change order of thirty thousand. Plenty of budget surplus within the Water Capital Fund. This is all, these are all 2021 expenditures, so it would go back to the 2021 budget because of the way a couple of projects hit in savings and other projects. Plenty of money to cover this overage. And again, just wanted to draw attention that even with that change order, there's still less than half of the competition. So, we tabulate all of their hours and look at what we would expect those changes to be, and it's still well below that. So, I feel like they were good to kinda keep the overage as small as possible while still making sure that they were covered on a project that, you know, we kinda all, you know, takes a little chance on. It's going through rivers, is, below rivers is challenging and can be risky work. So, cost usually equals, risk equals cost at some point, so. And that's about it.
Scott, you might mention too, the depth of what we had to go under the river so that we don't have any problems creating a catastrophe with the river itself or with the river causing our pipeline difficulties. a catastrophe with the, with the river itself, or with the river causing our pipeline difficulties.
Yeah, so this was kind of a design-build project, once we got, uh, the soil data, um, we were able to work with the contractor to determine this alignment here. Um, and each one of these tics is, I think it's five feet if I remember right, so this was designed in-house by the city. Um, so we're five, ten, fifteen, twenty, about twenty-five feet below the river. Um, this kind of goes below the Water Sports Park, big, big reason for that, you know, you're kind of driven by geometry, you can only bend a, a drill rig and the pipe so much and, and maintain the alignment you need, but we also need to make sure that when we're drilling, we don't, all of that needs to circulate under hydraulic pressure, uh, to get that material out of there and displaced for the pipe. You don't want that to blow out into the river and compromise water quality, or, or compromise the, the Water Sports Park structures. Um, so that's what drove, um, they go down through the upper cobble layers, get down into formation of shale and sandstone, blow the river, and then come back out through cobble. Um, which really one of those by themselves, drilling, um, is not the worst in the world, but when you combine the two, they're very different drilling methods, but you have to be able to do it all in one, and it makes, made for pretty, um, challenging conditions.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public comments? We have none, in that case, I would accept a motion. Would you have a comment to make? Okay, sorry.
Hey, yeah, Scott, first off, I'd like to thank you for all your hard work and effort that goes into all these projects, and, uh, and, I mean, being on top of this, uh, all the time is, is, uh, great work on your part. Um, you know, I, as I recall, when we did talk, and you mentioned a little bit here tonight, in the work session, that the overage that they had of the forty-nine, you know, that, that ate up some of the contingency, and then also into the thirty thousand extra that we're doing now, uh, you felt that was beyond reasonable, and actually lower than what you would have expected for what they had to go through, if I remember correctly, is that right?
Yeah, that's a very fair statement, when, you know, they, we started watching how much time it was taking, and they're, you're being very meticulous about it, because you only get one shot at these things, or you don't want to have to start over anyway, you can have another shot, but then you're starting over weeks. Um, yeah, I was, you know, I was just, we started adding up in our heads, and we go, oh no, you know? Um, because, you know, there, there are contractors out there, fortunately, our contracting pool, we don't really have this problem, but, um, they can use it as a chance, as an opening to exploit and take advantage. Um, and, um, that absolutely didn't happen here, they went very lean on their rates, um, fewer to s- added up by the hours spent, uh, beyond what their bid was by typical labor and equipment rates, uh, it would be well in ex- excess of what they're asking, so they, they were really great to meet us in the middle, and find a good middle ground to keep them covered, um, while not taking advantage of the situation.
Thank you, Scott.
David, anyway? Barbara? Well, then I would accept a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move to make a motion to award a change order in the amount of thirty thousand to Ridgeway Valley Enterprises Cerise Park Waterline Bore Contract as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion, second, please vote. That passes unanimously with one abstention. Item thirteen, City Council Consideration of Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-One Authorizing the City of Montrose to enter into a two-million-dollar grant contract with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the West Main Complete Streets Project. Scott Murphy.
All right, another exciting one, um, so no changes from work session on this one, this is the kind of paperwork side of the, uh, two-million dollars, uh, grant we received to, uh, work on multimodal, eh, transportation on, um, West Main, so, you know, that product is geared towards, um, you know, not accommodating traffic long-range, but also, uh, getting some pedestrian facilities in there, safer sidewalk access, safer bike access, more business, business-friendly, and more aesthetically pleasing frontages, um, to kind of bring West Main up to the modern age. Um, so there'll be more to come on that project itself, we actually opened the design proposals today, and we'll be going through, uh, the procurement process for design and bringing that to council here pretty soon. Um, but ahead of that, this is the, the kind of nuts and bolts to get the agreements in place, in place with CDOT to, um, receive the grant funds as we expend them, so, um, pretty standard state contract, uh, the, kind of the same on all these types of projects. Um, a couple of things to point out, you'll notice on page one, the dollar amount is zero, um, because they initially encumber zero dollars, and then as we go into designing and construction phases, they do option letters to formally encumber those funds. If you go into the lower exhibits, you'll see the two-million dollars, um, that, uh, that CDOT would be providing. Um, this takes the form of a resolution, uh, so the resolution kind of authorizes council to sign and enter into this agreement, and then, uh, Mayor Glasgow, you'll be seeing, uh, from the state, uh, controller, you'll be seeing some docu-sign, stuff coming your way to electronically sign the actual contract itself. So, yeah, more to come on the excit- more exciting aspects of the product soon, but, uh, happy to answer any questions you have on this.
Any questions, council? Any public comment? No public comment? Then I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to adopt Resolution Two-Zero-Two-Two-Dash-Zero-One as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, second, please vote. And that passes unanimously with one abstention. Item fourteen, Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-Two, City Council Consideration of Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-Two Setting March First, Twenty-Two-Two, is the hearing date for annexation of the Meyer Edition. Senior Planner, Amy Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'll share my screen here real quick. So nothing has changed on this one since, um, work session, when we just shared it not too long ago, so I'll kind of do a brief overview of it and not go through everything in detail. Um, this is the annexation schedule, which is also in your packet. Um, this project is located, um, north of Main Street, Highway fifty, and just west of Hillcrest Drive, or also, uh, um, s- west of Sixty-Six Hundred Road, north of Locust Road. It's about, it's a little over fourteen acres in size, as you can see here, it's surrounded, um, on the east and a little bit on the south by city limits, and it does beat the one-sixth perimeter. An annexation agreement is required for this one, and it's to allow for future housing development in this area. They're going to be asking for R-four, which is our high-density district for mul- for multifamily housing development. So you can see here, there's some R-four to the east, as well as some R-two to the south, and then there's agricultural, agricultural to the north, and a little bit to the south as well. Um, as I mentioned, the R-four is for multifamily housing. This is the annexation map, shows the perimeter contiguous to city limits. This is listed in our comprehensive plan as residential mixed density medium, which provides for a variety of residential types, which does include multifamily housing as well. And then I added this time some additional items where this would be in con- in conformance with our comprehensive plan, not just our future land use map, I'd mentioned that we wanted to add a few more things, and not just focus on that land use map all the time, but also focus on some of the different goals and objectives in our comprehensive plan. So this, I guess, is something new that I added since we last talked, um, that I mentioned, so in our land use goal number five, we talk about in infill and redevelopment, that we wanted to promote higher density, um, and under, underutilized sites in areas that could be easily accessed by foot, bike, or public transit, and that does feed that, meet that goal. Um, there's a couple others under housing and neighborhood. Housing variety, mentioned that we wanted to encourage a variety of housing types, tenure and density, to meet the needs of the community, and then there are a few objectives down there as well, that it helped to meet those, so I added those. And then affordable housing, this would increase access to more affordable housing in our community as well, and provide more choices for residents of all incomes and ages. This is located in growth area two, in our comprehensive plan. And this is just a summary of what we discussed tonight and in the past, and I'll open it up to any questions, if you have any.
Any questions, council?
Just thank you for including that information from the comprehensive plan, because that document does guide our decisions, and this decision would line up with those points that you pulled out, thank you.
I think it's important too, and I want to do it on, you know, a lot of our projects, not just annexations, but others as well, so we're not just focusing on one page in our comprehensive plan and how it meets those goals, but several things about our entire plan.
Would point out that, even though it's very nice to have that information included, so it shows our compliance with our objectives through the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan is a guiding document, and not a binding document, just, just for clarification for the public.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? In that case, uh, I would accept any public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back here and ask for a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Twenty-Two-Two-Dash-O-Two as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, second, please vote. And that passes unanimously with one abstention. Item sixteen, Montrose Public, oh, did I skip one, I'll bet, let me go back here. Item fifteen, Twenty-Two-Two Annexation Report and the Three Mile Plan. And that'll be our senior planner, Amy Sharp.
Right, thank you again, Mayor and City Council. So nothing has changed at all on this one since we presented it at work session, so I'll do kind of a brief overview of it as well, um, for the public, and then if I missed anything, or you have questions, feel free to ask. Um, this is what's required by law, um, state statute for us to do a annexation plan every year. Um, it do- it does go to Planning Commission, or it did, I should say, back on the twelfth, the Planning Commission doesn't take any action on it, and, but they just review it, and then it comes to council for an actual motion to approve it. Um, this is an overview of what we're going to discuss tonight related to the Three Mile Plan. So as I mentioned, the city is required to file a plan every year, it describes our proposed land uses, as well as our different utility and street infrastructure, and the comprehensive plan, which was just adopted last year, is also incorporated into this plan. Our policies are to annex from the center of the city out into our different growth areas, so those maps are in your packet as well. And basically, our pri- our priorities are private landowner requests, that's the majority of our annexations comes from people who actually reach out to the city asking if they can annex, because they want to connect to city utilities, or sometimes because they're just wanting to do, um, subdivisions and additional development on their property, which would then require them, um, to connect to city utilities and also develop per city standards. So that's the primary driver for, um, annexations, and then this kind of wraps in the properties served by utilities, city utilities. We also work on highway corridor properties, existing enclaves, and then those areas within our growth areas. So here are the maps I mentioned, um, our eligible enclaves, and last year, there were forty-two of them, um, with six-hundred-and-eight acres, so these are properties that are completely surrounded by city limits. Um, again, if these ever get annexed, it's usually due to private landowner request, and then this is our growth area map that you guys see anytime we do an annexation as well. Um, annexations are subject to our city comprehensive plan, as well as our city code, and this map just shows all of our different water service areas, I think all of you are familiar with those, and then, this is our transportation map, so Scott shared this in one of his presentations recently as well, and just kind of speaks to how much we actually use this transportation map when we're working on, um, future development in the city. So when somebody comes to us and annex, wants to annex, we look at our proposed network to see if any roads are proposed through that area, and we'll reserve those right-of-ways for future development. The same hold true, holds true for our parks, trails, and open space. So these are maps that we refer to frequently, anytime there's an annexation or a new subdivision, in order to make sure that we are, um, planning for future parks, for our Parks Master Plan, as well as recreational trail alignment throughout the city. Um, there's a list in your packet of all the city and public utilities that are within the city limits. And then this is the recent annexations, this is in your packet as well, and it just shows that we did a total of a hundred-and-sixty-six-plus acres last year, did a lot of cleanup annexations that were on city-owned properties. I think we're mostly through all of those, I think we have one more this year that we're working on, and we should be mostly done with, uh, city-owned cleanup annexations, and then there were quite a few big ones, um, private landowner requests as well. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
I don't know, any questions? I would accept any public comment. And we have none, in that case, I'll bring it back here and take a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move that we approve the Twenty-Two-Two Annexation Report and Three Mile Plan as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion, second, please vote. That passes unanimously. Next item is item sixteen, Montrose Public Safety Complex for Fixtures and Furniture Contract Award. Jim Scheid.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and Council, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, so this, uh, purchase recommendation is for the furniture portion of FFE. Um, usually it's procured, um, together, uh, as there are vendors, uh, associated with the FFE portion, uh, within the construction project, but we, we would be awarding the furniture portion only. Um, the remaining fixtures and equipment for this project, um, are procured in a, in other ways. Uh, some of them are included in contracts within, um, our construction team's contracts, and others are direct purchases by the city. Um, but in this case, we're asking, uh, for recom- are we recommending authorizing a total of five-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars? Um, and that would be for a contract with Office Outfitters, um, and a five percent contingency. Um, so simply put, it's the furniture, uh, for the new police department, uh, building, which is right there next to, uh, the Elks Building. Um, this was actually a fairly complicated, uh, procurement, and we did utilize our architect, uh, that, um, is designing the police department project, uh, to help us through this procurement, and I'm very glad we did. Blith Group, um, helped, uh, through this procurement and answered a lot of questions from vendors, uh, that get very complicated, you wouldn't think furniture, um, is that complicated, but it, it is, and I'm very glad we had Blith on our team to help us through that. Um, and speaking of the procurement, uh, we did receive three bids, and all of which were very close, um, which, uh, makes us feel good, because that means we are, uh, getting a good price, and, and, um, the vendor we're using was, is very competitive in the market. Um, and Office Outfitters as well, did have very good recommendations from several, um, projects in our area. Um, and that's, uh, we haven't worked with Off- Office Outfitters directly before, but because of those recommendations, we felt like they are, um, um, a good company to, uh, purchase our furniture through. Um, and then, the old last item with this is that, uh, it, this is, uh, an anticipated cost, it's an owner-provided item that, uh, we have anticipated since the beginning of the project. Um, and it actually came in under, uh, what we had, um, allocated in the Public Safety Fund for, uh, furniture, so, um, with that, there's been no other changes since we discussed at work session, uh, but if you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, council?
I would just like to say thank you, Jim, uh, you know, this day and age, looking at the, you know, the procurement process and everything that's out there, coming in under budget is a great, uh, benefit to everyone, so thank you for the hard work on this.
Welcome, thank you.
I noticed you're not wearing your tie.
Not tonight.
And, no, but, uh, it's, it's really exciting, and I, I liked, uh, with the diagram showing the kind of layout of the furniture, I think that makes it a little easier for us and the people to, to see kind of what you're having in mind and what you're doing with that money.
Yeah, that was an example of one office, uh, obviously, there would be something similar to that in every office, and, and each, each area is very specific, um, as to what is included in, they don't all get the same thing, it's very, very specific to their use and, and that area of the building, so I included, yeah, one, uh, one example, but all of them will be very different.
Barbara, you have a? In that case, I would ask for any public input. We have none, so I would accept a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move to award a contract in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars, including a five percent contingency to Office Outfitters as presented.
I'd like a second, I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Next item, we have, um, staff reports, do we have any staff reports this evening?
Yes, I believe we have our finance director on the agenda, and, um, I think she's joining here remotely.
All right. Shani Wittenberg, will you? Please give us your presentation. Now, give us just a second, let's see if we can pull it up there. Now, give us just a second. Let's see if we can pull it up here.
And in the meantime, I'll share that I do not have any reports. And if you'd like for a youth council member to go, well, if Shani needs a little extra time, then, um, I think we're ready to do that, too.
All right, let's do that. If you would, please introduce yourself.
I am Youth City Councilor Indica Taylor. Secretary of, or treasurer of the Youth City Council. We, as Youth City Council, have been contemplating two or three projects limited to, but not, or, including, but not limited to, uh, financial literacy class for high schoolers, a high school, uh, class credit course for high schoolers, uh, street cleanups, as well as possibly renting out the Fox Theater and hosting a movie for our high schoolers.
Good. And I think you guys just recently had a program out at the rec center, did you not?
Yes, we did. We had fun at the Field House, where we hosted a murder mystery party, as well as a glow-in-the-dark bo- dodgeball, and we had drinks and food as well.
It sounded like it was quite successful for you.
It was indeed.
Anything else for us this evening?
Uh, not this evening, no.
All right. Ann, do you want to, uh, continue the financial report for the next meeting, or?
Um, let's just test. Shani, are you able to join us? Okay.
Give us just a minute. We'll go on while they're doing that. Uh, any city ca- city council members want to make comments? Yeah, that's kind of unbelievable.
Comment when, uh, you don't ask.
Great, well, let's just, um, try here for maybe another minute. And if Shani's not able to join, if it works for council, we'd be happy to continue the report. All of the information, um, is in the packet, um, at the end. And so, um, we continue to see, um, strong upticks, strong economy in Montrose. And, um, I'm not prepared today to give all of the information that Shani usually gives. Um, however, the information is in the packet, and as we try to update you on between meetings, um, we we don't have any concerns at this time.
All right, I think it's, we can certainly do that. We can can combine that at our next meeting, and recover both issues at that time.
Right, and in the meantime, if any council members or members of the public have questions about, um, sales tax, use tax, um, please contact Shani Wittenberg. She's always very happy to meet with, uh, citizens one-on-one, business owners one-on-one, and of course, council members, too.
All right, thank you, Ann. And as Ann pointed out, all of this information is available in the packet, and you can subscribe to receive those packets on our, uh, Civic Plus.
Yes.
And that, it, right now, it shows that in Montrose is in fantastic economic shape.
Any other comments or questions? In that case, I would accept a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thank the public for watching.